Please call the meeting. Welcome, everybody. In person, online. All right. To you. Right there, entertain and consent motion for one point zero three. Provoke the reorganization meeting agenda.
Sir.
Okay, any questions on the agenda for July tonight's reorganization meeting? All in favor? Any votes? I can entertain a consent motion for two point zero one. All right. So that motion is to appoint Sherry Coletta as our district clerk for the school year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Are there any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Sherry? Do you, Sherry Coletta, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of District Clerk to the Board of Education of Genesee Central School District? Which you are now assigned. And thank you. All right. Thank you. So we just. And go on to find out to two point oh three.
And please solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of School Board Member at the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned. You, Lynn, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of School Board Member of the Genesee of Central School District to which you are now assigned.
I'd like to entertain a consent motion on two point zero four. Both of faithful performance in the office minister to superintendent Cindy Flowers, President District Service.
Sir.
Any comments, questions? Regarding two point oh four? Superintendent Flowers? All in favor? Any opposed? So.
Do you, Cindy Flowers, sorry, Cindy Flowers, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America? And the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of Superintendent of the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned.
Like energy, a motion, consent motion to accept nominations for the office of president and reward of education.
I'd like to nominate Mike Tavelli for president.
Any other? Candidates for board president? Hearing none? Any comments, questions further on for president? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? So that's one, two, three, four, four, five, four, one, one as a no. All right. So moved, thank you. With that, hold on a second. Well, set with two point oh. Six. All right, with that, I just want to say thank you for your trust. I do appreciate serving again as president for this year. Characterized last year as pretty much a learning experience where I've had the opportunity to evaluate and listen. Listen to suggestions. And come up with some thoughts and ideas that have prepared me for this year. I do want to welcome Lynn as a new board member. Welcome again, Kevin. And his reelection. It's, in my view, very clear, the community overwhelmingly. Supports the skills that you bring to the Board of Education, and I certainly personally look think, look forward to working with you and. And learning from each of you in those regards. Just a few updates for tonight's. Meeting in this year, as we go forward, just from my perspective, you'll see that the room layout. Is a little different, we're trying to return to our pre-COVID days where we have a little bit more. Participation at the table from the administration. And the board, we've also added a second screen, so hopefully when something is presented, everybody will be able to see it. And that includes the small font as well as the large font. We have John Holt behind the scenes here in his own little office now. So probably a little warm back there, Kevin.
I'm good.
Thanks for taking care of that.
Sure.
We will continue to broadcast and record our meetings. That's been well received, I know we have some online tonight. The, there'll be some adjustments to the committees, mainly in the policy committee where we'll add in terms of policy, we'll also be addressing facility and safety considerations. In that committee. Finance has always been, or recently included shared services and. Be asking them to to reduce sports, BOCs, any shared service that we currently have in the district. I would ask that we have minutes for all of the. Committing meetings as well. There'll be another committee that I've set up called the Strategic Leadership Committee. That'll include myself and the chairs of finance and audit, along with superintendent Flowers. And we'll have coordination in various policy review and discussions. Just generally coordinating the kind of the strategic direction of the district. Kevin is now an active member of the Capital Improvement Project. I know he's attended one, so on an ongoing basis. You know, we look forward to how that goes. We may rotate other board members in along with Kevin, just so everybody gets some experience to kind of work along with the project teams. I will reach out to GFA throughout this year and maybe periodically attend some of the meetings along the superintendent flowers. The agenda setting meetings will kind of evolve that in terms of looking at some of the more detailed topics. And there'll be other, I'll be reaching out to the board tomorrow. With in sending a draft of a retreat agenda. That I'd like us all to consider. Looks like the month of July is now gone, and we did have one or two days which have now been filled up, so. I think the first time we'll be able to meet will be sometime in August. I will send out those dates to the public as well as to the board. I believe it's around August, the first week of August, six, seven, eight, somewhere in that timeframe, that if your schedules permit. We should be able to try to get everybody together. And there'll be some internal and external. Attendees that, you know, will all review Cindy and superintendent Flowers, and I will sit down and go through the agenda. And the the retreat topics in greater detail shortly. So with that. I am looking forward to more outreach. With the board in general, and certainly specifically myself, both in terms of some town halls. Throughout the community, meeting with various organizations and in various internal and external. Members of our community, so I do look forward to that kind of conversation. And having an open ear and an open door. Throughout the the upcoming school and fiscal year, okay? So with that, I'm going to now turn to. Not yet, okay, you gotta do me first.
You, Michael Tumilio, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Genesee of Central School District to which you are now assigned.
I do, and I will. Okay, with that, I will entertain most. Myself, or item. Two point oh eight. For the Office of Vice President, any nominations?
No, I mean, Adam.
Seven, need a more. So. Any other interest in vice president? Any other candidates? For that? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations.
You, Michael Needham, I solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York? And that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Genesee of Central District, Genesee of Central School District to which you are now assigned.
Air Chan can send motion for three point zero two to three point zero six. Any questions on? The appointment of our officers, treasurer, deputy treasurer, purchasing. Tax collector. District clerk pro tem. Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? So, thanks. I'd entertain a consent motion for four point zero two. Three five, sir. Any comment on the appointments? Civil Service Officer, Health Coordinators, ready, a long list of appointments for this coming fiscal and school year. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Entertainer consent, motion for consent regarding five point zero two, five point zero nine. These are designations of our official bank, newspaper, file, degree, petty cash. Work hours. Authorizations. Certifications and so on. Any questions on any of these designations? In the consent to gen, uh, motion? All in favor? Any opposed? So. I'd like to entertain a consent motion for six point zero two. To six point one six. Okay, variety of areas here in terms of budget transfers, the amount associated with that. And signatory. And any other investment divided funds, signing of contracts and so on. Any questions on that? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Under personnel. Likes to entertain a motion, consent motion for seven point zero two. Seven point zero three, sir. Any questions on that, we do need under seven point oh three, we need an alternate? Anybody interested in being an alternate to the Genesee Valley School Board? Association? Don't all jump. If we need an alternate, we'll come back to you. All in favor? Any opposed? So. Item eight. Item eight, entertain a consent motion for eight point zero two to eight point zero six, sir. This is pertaining to the district wide safety team, incident response, data recovery, best value resolutions, and. Other cooperative resolution. I know the policy committee will be taking. A lot of interest in evaluation of various incident response. Processes, so with that said. All in favor? Any opposed? And entertain a consent motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting nine point zero. All right, any further discussion on the reorganization for the current year? Did you ask? No, okay, second, you say, I say. All in favor to adjourn the reorganization meeting? Any opposed, so moved the. Schedule for the regular meeting is at seven P M. No, no, but we're gonna go right into what it said seven P M on the.
It's going right into.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Right? Stay correct. With that. Open the meeting. Entertaining a consent motion for consent for regular board meeting agenda one point zero three. Any comments, changes? All in favor, somebody? Regular board meeting agenda for tonight?
All right.
Any opposed? Entertainment, entertaining consent motion for approval of the regular board meeting minutes of July eighth of June seventeen twenty one. Yeah, the minutes of June seventy, but the last meeting. There we go. Any comments, any changes, adjustments to the minutes from the last meeting? All in favor? Any opposed for that? One point oh four, so moved. All right, very.
Excuse me, everyone. So we're here to present updates to the twenty twenty four C I P, there's been some slight tweaks to the floor plans. We prioritize B C S scope, and there'll be a summary in here, and then there's some potential project proposals, just to give you an idea of. How to package scope and what the. The total cost would be and the tax impact, so.
Well, this is the package that was sent to board members to earlier today, and this is based on your project team. Updates from the last meeting, and what the project team met to review, evaluate, adjust. Both. From a technical perspective as well as financial.
Correct. So I'm gonna breeze through the first few slides here. Because they haven't changed the last few presentations, but we'll have the drawings. You guys see the overall plan. This is your existing building, the gray indicates the portion of the building that was built in nineteen seventy two. The yellow portion is what was added in the early two thousands, and then the blue is what we recently completed, the elementary gymnasium in steam additions. And then this overall plan starts to highlight. Target areas in the twenty twenty four C I P, so you'll see the auditoriums highlighted, the security vestibule, the U P K. Area, elementary school art and music rooms.
Are you able to zoom in at all on these?
There's going to be large plans coming up, that's why I'm kind of breezing through these, so. Keep going until you get to the security vestibule. Actually, I'll pause you at the gym, so go to the gym. Rendering, the only change to the gym. Since we last met. Is we took out that glass corner. Because that was a part of a previous design, we eliminated the exterior stairs, we simplified some of the punched openings, so all the glass you see on that rendering. It exists today, but the windows are smaller, so the idea would be to leave the existing. Rough maestro opening in place, leave the window in place, drop the sill to capture more natural light, so try to achieve more natural light in the most cost effective way possible. And we reduced some of the buttresses, but that is just a concept elevation, so as we progress through the design. Buttresses might be deleted, they might be tweaked, they might change the material, it might be planned, this is just a concept at this point. Actually. If you could go back to the locker rooms and zoom in. To the. Lower level locker rooms. So one of the. Comments that came out the last presentation was, was in the locker room, I believe we had just shown. A bunch of lockers. And we took a. Attempt at a potential, again, this isn't locked in, but we have a coach's office, we have a storage room which will be accessed off. The corridor, we have single, or we have toilet rooms with several stalls, we'd have to run extra counts once we get into. The design phase of the project, and we started looking at sightlines. To make the locker rooms private. And I believe we're in the thirty to forty locker count right now in that U, U shape area. So the next area we looked at was the security vestibule. And the idea was how do we achieve compartment, how do we compartmentalize, how do we. Control visitors entering the building? And more cost effective. Design. It should be, the altar has not changed. To me, two more. So you see here, we took out the risers that currently exist. On the plan north side of the vestibule, and we plan a check-in office, which will have a window directly into the existing vestibule, and then we took. That corner. Because it was going to be awkward, and we converted it into an S R O office, if you can zoom into that area. And then we eliminated the existing check-in office, it's no longer needed, and this will improve circulation in the space. One thing we need to look at is that vestibule is a little narrow, and there are code requirements for accessibility, so that interiors have doors to be compliant. Is mostly going to have to shift plan east. But we have plenty of room, you can see there's still wall space along the attendance office to. Shift those doors over. Any questions about this change? Is this?
No, I don't, I think you bet what we talked about at the. Project meeting.
So then moving on to the B C S scope. That's gonna be lower in the the presentation. We we list out B C S priority one scope, based on conversations we've had with the district, and B C S priority two scope. So in terms of priority one scope. It's the gym walls that are starting to fail, it's the mercury floor in the gym, it's boiler number one, it's on its last legs. And it's the dust collector. And all that scope. Add together is roughly six point two million dollars. The biggest unknown until now is B C S priority two scope. Which is on the next page, and that is based off of. Conversations with Aaron Davis. And in here you'll see it's interior doors, and there are. Numerous problems, some of the doors don't have safety blasts, some of the doors are not rated, some of the doors have non-compliant hardware, so. Dead bolts, some of the pad hardware needs to be replaced, has reached end of useful life. So currently the doors are grandfathered in, but the idea would be to. Start to modernize and improve some of the openings, so that number at the bottom, you can zoom in, Joe. Which is about one point three million dollars, that's assuming. We're going to replace. Every interior door, bringing it up to compliance, and we're factoring. Roughly seven thousand dollars to replace door openings, and again, that number can be scalable, we can. Replace ten doors, twenty doors, we can work up, but that would be the cost to replace. A hundred and one doors in your school. The, the number above. Would be for. The, there's several spots with concrete slabs heaving, specifically one area is in a kindergarten toilet room. Where it looks like there's an issue with a pipe under the slab. And that pipe is now starting to cause the concrete slab to heave, which is causing the tile to crack, so there are two locations where that happens. That was high on Aaron's list to remove the flooring. Remove a portion of the slab, fix the issue under the slab, report the slab and replace the flooring. There are several areas where emergency lights are not compliant, so this isn't every emergency light in the school, this is a handful. And exterior doors are another item that's high on the priority listed. And similar to interior doors, the exterior doors have just reached end of useful life. They're old, they have single pane blazing in certain spots, they don't meet current energy code, some are rusting, so. We'll remove them and put in a new aluminum frame, F R P.
What about just the? The number that you have here is a little different than the number that came out in today's. So I see the difference being in the emergency lighting.
We've been working with campus on those numbers, so the number I was carrying was a little light, so that number better reflects the current market conditions.
Yeah, as we talked last meeting, this is something we're continuing to work on. And try to update and get you guys as much information so you can be prepared to come to the meeting too, but this is. Those are even those, I think we're going back and forth around eleven thirty this morning, so.
And air handling, you and some marketing, so another item that's on the list. We don't have to do everything on this list, but this is sort of the scope that's on that for the next part of the billion that needs to be updated, because it's just starting to reach end of useful life. And the next slide is program scope, so it's. Items that we've heard over numerous meetings over the last year, year and a half, so we're talking about the. Gym locker rooms, the team rooms. Corridor renovations, finish upgrades. The secure main entrance, which is an B C S item, but it certainly improves the security of your school, is in here, so we, we tried to. Sort of break out the project scope so that you kind of see where the needs are, and where the wants and items are that will help improve the program. So. This slide is showing you what the all-in number is. As, I slightly amend that, because right now this number is carrying an allowance of seven hundred thousand dollars for B C S priority two scope, and if you go back to the previous slides, you'll see that. The priority to B C S scopes roughly around three point five million dollars. So. We're now assuming we can handle all that scope. But we are reserving some spot in that. Project option one for B C S priority two. But this would handle everything with the gym, so. But this would handle everything with the gym, so the program scope for adding locker rooms. Um, renovating team rooms, the B C S priority one scope for the C M U walls and the mercury floor. Um, everything is baked into that option one.
So I I I guess the question then is if we. Provided a single proposition to vote, that's what the number would be-ish, correct? And first thing from Ron, last time. There were two options, one was about twenty eight million and the other's about thirty three million. And so. What has been removed is related to design? Is it in any way compromise the needs of the. Stakeholders, users and so on.
I I don't believe so. So we really, we we targeted, how do we provide you with the same value and program? For a more cost effective price. Um, the gym is probably the biggest. Um, saver in that receiving the two existing stair towers, we're saving team rooms. Um, the elementary school locker rooms are just receiving cosmetic upgrades, so lockers, floor and wall finishes. But we're not reconfiguring, knocking down walls. We. We really sharpened our pencils and tried to provide you with the same level of program and more cost effective process.
Last meeting, we talked about possibly a new roof and maybe air conditioning in the gym, but I didn't know if you were able to find places for that.
The the roof is not captured in these numbers. And we can certainly add add that. Uh, it depends on the area. You know, I don't know the area off the top of my head, so I apologize.
I know it's something that Jason is currently looking into to get that number and we can provide that. So we need to talk about giving you two choices and then one, what? Or what a a coating would cost. Those are two different systems.
Any idea when you can get those numbers?
I know you're working on them. As I last week and actually this morning too, and you were not able to finalize it with the proffer. Um, but we will, we'll be in touch with them later by the end of the day tomorrow, so you'll have it by Wednesday.
Um, what percentage is built in for box over lines and are accepted dated?
Sure, so the numbers you're seeing actually incorporate an overall assumption, which is about twenty two percent. Yeah, that's your construction, this is your incidentals, your uh, your soft costs. So those are all, they're twenty percent embedded in those numbers itself, so it's not over the above.
And these are, these each one of these numbers are fully loaded, including destruction costs, any of the design tendencies, construction contingency. An escalation number built into this, projecting a October vote with a timeframe of a delivery of construction fifteen months from there.
Any other questions about this slide before we move on?
Yeah, just going back to my notes from last, so in addition to the roof, um, I think we. There was some consideration, I didn't know if it was put in here, some changing space. And here's my notes from last meeting, I just want to see if we included them. Student changing space, potential storage rooms in the team area, um, option roof. As you discussed, Gary, and then. Any air con, potential air conditioner.
So to address your first couple of comments, the changing space, I believe was the fiscal education locker rooms. And the storage space was also in that layout for the fiscal education locker rooms.
How many students are in roughly in each P E class?
Uh, it varies, but I would say fifteen to twenty per class.
So the the thirty to forty lockers is plenty of space to validate.
There could be sixty kids in there at one time. Um, apparently you don't require changing, kids are, have the option to change if they'd like to change.
Why I say thirty to forty lockers, I'm assuming it's a full height locker, there are options to do three tiers and four tiers. And there's room to do peninsulas and we can start tweaking the size of those storage rooms. So there is some massage and some finessing that we can do to these plans to meet whatever numbers you need. And then regarding the. Um, the A C in the gym, I believe the eleven million dollar number that you saw on. Um, the presentation, that includes new mechanical equipment. Um, I'll work with him to make sure.
So barring those last two, I. The twenty, call it twenty three million dollars. And maybe a little bit additional if we had roof and other things.
And there's an opportunity again to scale this, so we can reduce the B C S priority to or increase it. The corridor renovations will be an easy one to start to scale and. All sections out, so there are opportunities.
Yeah, for about twenty three million, if the numbers, the bullet points that were discussed in the last meeting, I think that summarizes. All the touch points that we brought up in discussions. It is our, is our takeaway, our understanding.
Thank you for all the work you've done. Between June fourth and now. So then if we were to split it into. Instead of a single proposition.
Yeah, so that would be option two. So this was intent of base scope, what were your biggest needs and where are some. Um, program needs, so we're looking at the gym still, all of the gyms still. We're looking at the team rooms, the corridor renovations, where this starts to shave some money is the auditorium. So the base scope would be the stage floor, it would be the acoustical shelves. And the uh, curtains, the lamps for the theatrical performances. So what was removed was the egress corridor, was a storage um, structural floor. Uh, the equipment lift, the single occupant toilet room, the janitor's closet, all of that was pulled out and that was slid into proposition two.
Might be a silly question, but if the gym floor was to be um, tore up. Can that, could that be the floor that replaces the auditorium? That is completely different. Or is that even salvageable when you're tearing that?
I would just say it's pretty much like in a salvage. If it wasn't going to increase the cost of the sweep. The other thing that was pulled out of the base scope was B C S priority two. So that seven hundred thousand dollar allowance was slid over into proposition number two. And that is on. And the idea behind sliding the um, the storage behind the auditorium out was. We want to do the internal stuff in the odd that would be difficult to do later on, so sort of starting in the middle. Use that as a base scope and work our way out. And then in option number three, this is almost bare bones. The gym is still. Um, B C S priority one, so C M U walls and flooring and some program scope. But then the only other scope that would be in this option is the boiler and the dust collector. So trying to hit, or our template was to hit. Three significantly different projects, so you can see, okay, what are we getting for our our dollar? The next slide is the chart that fiscal advisors um, provide us that shows you the tax impact at two million dollar. Um, increment, so I believe it starts at seventeen million dollars and works its way up.
We'll get to schedule then. Any comments, thoughts on? Any of the details we've heard in each of the options, but I think the second question is, is is our preference. From the board, um, all in or two separate or bare bones? That that kind of the best way to depict the the three options? Anybody? Option two. So that's the two propositions, one at seventeen, one at the other number. Devin, Bobby, any thoughts? What do you want?
The others.
So Kyle, just once again, the seventeen and the five here, these, the things that were moved from. The first.
It's all back to stage. So it's, uh, well, egress quarter is the biggest one. And then scene shop and the structural floor that would go along with um, building the storage room above the scene shop. Back to the rendering, you just pointed out, it would help out, sure. Uh, it's slide fourteen, Joe. So it would be. Basically, everything in that orange's color would be base scope, everything in this red color would be. Um, the additional proposition. So this is your egress quarter, janitor's closet, the scene shop, the equipment lift.
Feedback from all board members and then I don't want to hear from anybody out here as well. Option two being two propositions?
Nice to option one again.
Kyle, it is, is correct, am I correct to assume that option two is really option one split into two pieces, right? It's all the same stuff.
The other point of clarification on that is however the proposition will be written. You have to have a. In the, you have to have the seventeen million. In order to do the other.
Yeah, the additional passed and the first one failed, that is just.
Just a thought, Craig brought up last time that asking the taxpayers to pay over twenty million. We just passed three point eight percent on our main budget, it seems like. We gotta be below twenty million in order for them to even consider it. That's just my opinion.
Well, it's also educating the public about. You you know, the fact that your your main budget incorporates in paying for. Other proposals, so it's not like your your tax cap goes up automatically by X percentage of whatever the proposal is. Um, my main reason for going all in is we've already disenfranchised. The. The fine arts group once with the current capital improvement project that was just completed. Where everything that's now in option two, a lot of the things were engineered out. The voters that already approved that were to be done. And now we're making it less of a priority again. So that's, that's why. I'd be more in favor of option.
But option two has the potential, it does, it does de-prioritize. But.
It sends a message.
It does send a message, no question. But the risk would be failing the whole thing again and starting over. Where if. I see page two of option two. I don't love it. Um, I'm concerned that we lose the whole thing again. Um, and some of those concerns in the first half are dire.
I think you have significant safety concerns in that weeded out option that are being addressed.
I'm sorry, did you, which one did you prefer? I'd like to hear, anybody here want to weigh in on the thought process or? Who hasn't spoken up here like.
Um, you know, I don't know, I've been producing the musicals and. Um, you know, I think option two is probably the right option, to be honest, to get it passed. But the truth is, people aren't going to vote for four million dollars for just the auditorium. Especially if they've just voted for seventeen million dollars for the gym. So, and that's bothering me. Um, it's also bothering me on a personal level because I have kids who went through the programs. My kids who are old enough to understand budgets and things were really upset that the auditorium. And backstage and all that stuff did not get addressed and they are now voters. Um, and the other reason is, uh, you know, I feel like. Athletics are super important and I have, I'm an athletics person. But to be honest, the impact that our fine arts program has had on my kids. Has been just as significant, if not more so. In fact, a conversation with my son yesterday showed that even more, where he said. He's now joined two groups at the Naval Academy, both musically oriented. And both are allowing him to feel a little bit more human right now than he was feeling. And to me, I went to all of his music teachers and said, you've done this, this school allowing this to happen has done this. So I feel like I know my option two is there, but. I gotta tell you, I mean, if I was going to sign in today, I decided not to, to talk about how important the fine arts are to our kids. They are lasting, no way is he playing a sport at the Naval Academy. But he certainly is going to be in the band and the choir. And that came because we prioritize fine arts here and I don't want that to be the message. That's out that we get again saying they're not important.
I hesitate, but you got a lot of thoughts, I think I'm a pretty active listener. And I heard a comment, you don't want to risk the entire thing going down. It was an art, it was a science. At the last meeting, Mr. Melber, I'm going to compliment you because you talked about the lifespan of the of the roof. And you guys have to be good at what you're doing because you're in a competitive business. But I think more detail you put into your presentations, the better served you're going to be making your decisions. Um, I know time is a crunch, but it would have been helpful to see that cost that roof included in the proposition one. I don't have a strong feeling about whether it's on the proposition, option one or option two. At the process, uh, you've got option two off, you've got auditorium reconstructed at four million. And then you've got six or seven bullets under it. More information you give to both, maybe the board has it, but the more information you present to the community, the more confidence you can build. So I would encourage you, I kind of articulated this last October. Price out every component piece and put it up there so people can make a decision on is. I I scene shot jumped off, and I'm not making a valid judgment, but now you know the cost of the scene shot. And you can make a better decision about that option. And your comment, and you've got something above your main entrance, striving for excellence. One of, one of, one of our models when I was working was striving for excellence in everything we do. And performing arts, athletics, uh, now they're all equally important to the students they're serving. So I'm afraid, don't make the mistake of separating out by this component, it's more important than that. I would include more detail, I encourage you guys to include more detail. Last year, when you had the the large meeting, there was an architect engineer and she made a comment. Uh, it's functional to the aesthetics. You said you scaled down, uh, I want to say balance. You said you scale down, uh, I want to say balanced, it's not balanced. But whatever you put out, it's got to be a fairly representative diagram. I, I, I don't think you want to make mistakes in, oh, this is a preliminary design. Perceptions are important to people, so I would encourage the professional team here to have as much detail and as much accuracy as you possibly can upfront.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think just to kind of give everyone an understanding of where we're at with the levy, you know, you're taking out about six hundred thousand dollars a year that would go to the levy. That's what we keep the bus plan and everything else. If in the next five years, this year, coming out for a three day, you're not saying, right? So with twenty-five mil hypothetical, next, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, three point five. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, two point four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, three point six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, three point seven. So we would want to ban some of that, um, to try and live, like bring that two, four, five, to like two eight, and bring that three sixes and three sevens down to two eight. A little low to two. Right, exactly. So to try and live somewhere around two eight to three, but that's where it's going to be at in order to, to make this happen. So I just want to make sure that that's out there in the, in the order. Yeah. Further comments? Thoughts?
You know, I think I would say is that, uh, certainly our students do participate in all the above, so that's a wonderful thing. You know, option one would be ideal. We have a good feel for the community that they will go for that, we have to consider that because the only concern I have is if option one doesn't go, what do we do to another gym shutdown? I think we have to be thoughtful of that because it could happen anytime, and if we're talking four or five years out, the longer we go, the more likely. And so I guess getting feel from the community at large, you know, what is one that they would support? Because that is, I'm a big supporter of everything included in, in option one. But can we take that risk? And I think I don't have that feel right now from the community, so I don't want to speak or give it a disservice. But I do think that, uh, if it goes down, then what?
Okay. So we have a little time to make the final decision, correct? We have until early August?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'm going to speak my viewpoints here. But I do want to spend some time in the outreach, go out and talk and listen and see whether one or two propositions from the community is, is more palatable. That said, my personal viewpoint is we, and I commend SEI and campus. Since we met last, you've taken out just shy of six million dollars in one option and eleven million in another. I think that's, that's huge progress. I would opt for a single proposition. But again, I reserve and listen before we make final judgment. We will do that. I, I hope we can do that at the, what's the August meeting, fifth? August fifth meeting, yeah. That's her for everybody, because that kind of makes it three to three here, but from that standpoint, let's listen and, and go from there.
Would we possibly have an opportunity to have like a public forum?
Yeah, that's kind of, we've got to, I think we have to.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, when? TBD, but yes, I think we need at least one. And in some sense, various outreach, communication, roadshows again. Okay. You want to just touch base on schedule before we let you go?
We reduce it a little bit? Good, okay. So what we talked about, and it's just the same information we provided last time. And what you're looking at is being it now July, we did, now the second task on the red banners is presentation to the board this evening. And then in July, August, that there is this self due secret, but the secret can be kind of recycled, I believe it can be re-tweak a little bit and re-adopt it, right? So that saves a lot of time there. And then what we were discussing last time is having that final decision on the secret leaving negative, anticipating a negative declaration of, right? And a referendum stuff, because if we're going to hit, I know it's not, it could, it could change, but right now, we've talked about the past, it's October eighth. So we by law have to back that up forty-five days. So that's why the August conversation is in play right now, because in order to hit that October eighth day, you have to back that up forty-five days, there you are, August. So recognizing there's always maybe one board meeting notice, maybe or two, okay, two, so that gives us a little bit of flexibility to hit the second meeting if we have to. Gives you a little breathing room in there because it's already, I know it's crazy, right? July eighth, right? Time is going quickly, so. Um, but then if you're, if you want to hit that October eighth date by the, no later than that second board meeting in August, you'd have to set the referendum date, first you declare a negative declaration of secret, then you would set your referendum date.
Okay.
So you could have a, a public forum at your August fifth meeting if you wanted to have public comments and options there, just to give us two weeks most likely to finally package it, put the final package together for that resolution. If something was the major come out of that conversation, that would be changing scope.
Yeah, well, I think what will be important is for the project team and myself to put some dates together that would be available, um, to have that community forum and try and appoint as many of the board members. I know it's going to be difficult end of July, but as many of the board members available as possible.
Okay.
I don't need to speak for our team, but I think amongst us, we'll make whatever date you designate, we'll, we'll make it work amongst us.
Yeah.
You tell us to be there, we'll be there.
I mean, we have a, the Mike's point too, we all, we, we recognize there is a, a degree of sense of urgency in this. There's some things we want to do, but there's some things that are essentially required. Okay.
The meeting that we had, um, the last meeting where, where we went over all of this, I, I just want to share that I appreciate all of the work that you all put in and the conversation that was had. Um, because I believe out of that grew a new way of looking at things and I, I just appreciate it. And I think continuing with conversation in that vein, uh, with the community, more of the community would be incredibly helpful. Um, because, I mean, all of our goal is excellence at GCS. So how can we best do that and what, what is most palatable and manageable for the community as far as taxes and what are they getting, so?
Any other comments, thoughts, as we?
No, yeah, I just really want to reiterate what everyone has said about the project team. They absolutely, um, took the time from our June twenty-fifth meeting, listened to our feedback, really prioritized our needs and, um, in a very short time turned around, um, this presentation and the different options for us to have. So thank you for, for all of your work.
We appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will get to you, the update on the roof and on the air conditioning for the gym, that you should have that for your conversations with the public. Oh, thank you this week. Thank you.
There's one thing I would highlight though, if that second option, the five million, if there's under five million, that should be, if we could put a number with that, how does that directly impact the taxpayer? Because it could be so small that people say, okay, that's not a significant difference to vote it down. I think that it's kind of where dairy goes, more information the better.
Right.
So seventy-one percent paid for a million dollars.
We were, we were trying to get some of those financial figures for us, working with fiscal advisors. We were cutting them short on time, get you an exact number. Um, but they're, they're willing to do it. That's why we were able to get some two million dollar runs at this. Um, not to defend them at all, but just, that, that was the purpose. So now that we have this information, they're actually going to be running figures on that. So you can see what a face project tax impact would be and what a prop would be for that, the public's information is definitely something that will be worth it.
Thank you. All right. You guys are welcome to stay, ready to go?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll flicker it, so I'll just pull my slides for me.
Thanks, Superintendent.
Thank you. So yeah, it's already July eighth, twenty twenty-four. It's hard to believe that July is going so quickly. It seems like, um, graduation is over and then the fourth and boom, July eighth. So, um, just excited to show some of the progress in our capital improvement project that's finishing. Um, you'll see the next slide is our exercise room, so that is right across from the steam rooms. Um, what we were able to do with our contingency budget was to put flooring in there, um, paint, we painted the walls ourselves. Um, and what that does is that has really given us additional space for our physical education classes as well as for, um, our student athletes. So excited to see everyone using that space, um, in the future. And then, um, the trap, I don't know if you've noticed it on your way in, it looks amazing. So it's repaired, it's power washed, it has new painted lanes. Um, it's, it's really remarkable what that update did. It looks, it looks brand new. So very excited to have our student athletes, um, running on that this fall. And then last but not least, I know everyone is very excited about the new playground. It looks amazing. Um, this picture is actually from last Thursday. Um, I should have stopped on my way in today and taken a picture because the mulch is completely in, the concrete, um, mow strip is completely completed and it just, it looks ready for our students to be out there playing and having a wonderful time. So excited about that being open this summer for our family. There's still some, um, obviously site work, as you can tell, around the exterior of the playground that will be done this summer before we can open it up. But exciting, excited to do that for the future of our students. They, uh, they were being very creative with where they were going. Um, so we both, we started both our general education and our summer school classes. Our general education are K through five and they will go four days a week for four weeks. Our special education classes go five days a week for six weeks. And that is because it is required by the state education department, if you're going to run and approve special education program, it does have to go for six weeks, five days a week. So they started and Mrs. Curly is the administrator in charge of those programs. And so I'm sure it was fun to have the hallways bustling again with, with our students. Lot of noise.
Thank you, thank you for what you're doing over the summer, appreciate it.
And then you may have heard, um, at the end of the year, um, Anne Mariotta was, um, a foreign language teacher who here, who unfortunately has passed away. And her husband Frank wanted to, um, do an annual award that recognized, teach, teachers who are recognizing other teachers for, um, just doing amazing things. And, um, unfortunately, I don't have the, the snippets that, that, um, were read for each teacher. But their peers nominated them and, and shared just such caring and compassionate stories about each of these educators. So that's Carly Stevenson and Melissa Vasselli. So there's an elementary teacher and a middle school, high school teacher. Um, it was a wonderful way to end our school year and so looking forward to that tradition that GCF is helping, um, to manage and oversee. So congratulations to both Carly and Melissa. And then we know that our teens are very successful, but this for the first time ever, the Livingston County did a teen of honor award and, um, Anna Levy was one of two students who, um, was awarded a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship. So congratulations to Hannah. She did well at her scholarship night and then now is continuing to win awards. So congratulations to her. And any questions?
Any questions for? Superintendent report? Comments? Well done, thank you. Things are looking good.
That's great.
For that, we will go to community relations. I see Jen, we have you, you don't speak? Laura, yours?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know who I am, I am Jen Melbacher. I graduated from GCS in nineteen ninety. My oldest child graduated in twenty sixteen and my youngest in twenty twenty. I sat on this board for eight years, five of which as I was president, and I left the board in twenty twenty-one. I know several of the current board members and served with both Craig and Mike, and I consider both of them friends and esteemed past colleagues. I am here today to express a concern and I also have a request. Though I am no longer on the board and no longer have children in the school, my heart is still very much here. I want only the best for the students, faculty, the staff, and the taxpayers of this community. As Mike and Craig can attest to, the years that I was board president presented us some unique situations that I will not outline here, but that were particularly daunting to navigate. One of these situations involved the need to hire a new superintendent. The board at that time spent many extra hours in executive session, reading through resumes and other material to choose a short list of candidates to interview for this crucial position. We spent weeks interviewing, which included input from all the constituent groups in the community and within the school. After an exhaustive, extensive, arduous, and expensive process, we offered Cindy the position. She had never been a superintendent, but when she began, she hit the ground running. In her first year, I worked closely with her and I saw how eager, eager she was to learn and do her best for this district. After all, she too is a tax care, a resident of the district, and both Jack and Robbie attend school here. She had and still has a vested interest in the quality of education that is provided within these walls and a strong desire to do what is best for the students and staff while also answering to the taxpayers. In that first year, she was hit with a monumental task of dealing with a pandemic for which no one had a rulebook. She navigated that year the best she could with patience, grace, and calm. She did her best to get information out to the public in a timely manner, to stay on top of every situation that arose daily in those first weeks and then months. Her second year, she had to navigate what coming back to school would look like, which was also no easy feat. During these first years, I saw a woman who was brand new to this position manage the unimaginable. She was upfront with us, took all of our questions and tried to find answers, admitted mistakes, sought to build relationships with all constituent groups and was honest to a fault. As president, as president, I trusted her implicitly, which I had not, not felt prior to her tenure. At that time, the entire board agreed with that assessment of her performance, which was reflected in each of the end of year evaluations we were required to complete. At the end of my tenure in June of twenty twenty-one, we chose to extend her contract until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. This brings me to my concern. In reviewing the last few years of board agendas, I noticed something concerning. I saw that in June of twenty twenty-two, Cindy once again requested and received a contract extension that would go through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. However, I noted that on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, an additional extension was not given. A one-year extension is a standard request in a superintendent's yearly contract negotiation report. So I was surprised it wasn't included. I began to wonder if there were issues with Cindy that either the board was not sharing with the public or couldn't. The best way to get any firm answer to my question was to foil her evaluation for this year. I know from my time on the board that it is in June when the board generally completes and shares their evaluation with Cindy. An executive session is held as stipulated in her contract, allowing her to ask questions and review her evaluation with the whole board. Only then is the contract with her completed and her contract possibly extended. I noted in her current evaluation that she was rated as either effective or highly effective in all seven categories by no less than four out of seven board members. In community relations, she had six people rate her at this level. In instructional leadership, she had the support of all seven members at this level. These are just two examples, but in looking through the evaluation, I found nothing and no one who rated her ineffective. In the developing category, she only had two categories where three members ranked her at that level, which means the majority rated her higher. I also know from speaking to a few people over the last year that the negotiations for the contracts that were negotiated this year and last seemed to go smoothly or completed in a timely fashion without any contentiousness. This is not always the case and certainly wasn't while I was on the board. This seems to imply that she maintains an effective relationship with those bargaining groups. This then makes me wonder why Cindy's contract wasn't extended last year. It also makes me wonder why her evaluation process does not seem to be wrapped up in a meeting set with her to discuss this year's evaluation. I would also ask when the agenda will reflect that next year's contract agreement is up for a vote by the board in open session. If, as I fear, there is some kind of movement behind the scenes by this board to remove Cindy or not extend her contract from this position she now holds, I'd like to know why. If the board is not intending to support her continuation as our superintendent beyond June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, I think the public has a right to know that information well in advance of the search you would have to complete in hiring a new superintendent. Her current evaluation shows nothing that would support such a move by this board. I realize I'm not privy to all things that go on here anymore or an executive session, but I was president long enough and have relations with enough community members to recognize when something doesn't seem or feel quite right. This doesn't seem or feel quite right. If this board is seeking to quietly remove Cindy as superintendent, I hope they have a very good reason and can share this with the community, give their reasons when the current evaluation does not support this move. I would ask this board to think long and hard about the reasons, and if those reasons are objective in nature or subjective and can be quantified. You all will be asked to justify not extending Cindy's contract if that is in case, indeed the case. Because again, your own evaluation does not support such a move. Is Cindy perfect? No. Does she make mistakes? Of course. Does she love this school and its community? Resoundingly, yes. In the current environment, you will be hard pressed to find a new, more experienced and capable superintendent who will share the same love of this community and its children than the one here tonight. If this is a path you are heading down, you better be absolutely certain you have the support of all the constituent groups in this school and community before making such a bold and, in my opinion, reckless, needless, and wrong decision. I supported Cindy as her board president, and I support her now as a community member, a community member. I think you will find, if you ask, that she has the support of the majority of this community, both inside and outside of these walls. I appreciate your listening today.
Thank you. On to committee reports. Nothing. Start of August again. Same policy. Nothing with GCF. All right, with that, there's a quick help section. Entertaining consent motion for six point zero two, six point one seven. Sorry. Okay, uh thank you for the updates to the agenda, the addition of the various pieces of information we needed, especially of the physical therapist. I understand certification is in effect and they are from expensive boards. Any other questions, comments, thoughts on six point oh two through six point one seven? In that case, all in favor?
I I.
Any opposed? So move.
Like a consent motion for seven point zero two to seven point one zero.
Any questions on any of the items under new business?
Any question about seven point oh four?
CSEI.
No, it's the obsolete books.
Seven point.
Seven point four.
Seven point zero five.
That's weird. Anyway, about the yeah, um so I saw that uh students and staff would have the opportunity to um any books left over, what happens to them? Are they donated somewhere?
Yeah, we try to donate them as well. And and so what is that where those obsolete books are actually on a shelf that says free and whoever takes some kind. But yeah, we can try to donate them. Um unfortunately, we're not able to donate some, and then you do have to um throw them out, but we do try to those other alternatives first.
Community library.
Yeah, the community library does accept donations.
Any other questions? All in. All right, Mike. So in this focus, entertain a motion consent motion um for eight point zero two.
Sir.
With the acceptance of the donations, we certainly thank the donator. Questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So on this, we have, is there any old business, any topics that anybody wants to bring up at this point?
Um not necessarily old business. I know that there um was conversation about looking to do an RFP, Request for Proposal, to change our insurance agent. Um and so just wanted to fill that up for the board that that was something the whole board would like to move forward with. It wouldn't be something that we would be able to quickly, that would change our insurance agent quickly. Um we would work with fur and forensic to ensure that the criteria in our request for proposal um made sure that we were getting a carrier that can meet all of our needs, um especially with all of our current location. So it was really a question to the whole board if that was something that we would like to move forward with.
Yeah, so I've I've recommended that we at least take a look at um
local.
Potentially bringing our insurance coverage into the Gen CO central school district. Okay, with that said, there are various insurance agents that um and our coverage is through Utica National. I don't know all of them. I know some do at least work with Utica Nationals from a coverage standpoint. I don't think there's any any issue, but again, it's it's a it's a proposal to uh to evaluate. And then based on that RFP, we can then take a close look at whether or not we stay with the current or bring it into one of the local insurance. So that was the the essence. Sense of the board? Yes, no? What's our renewal date?
Yeah, good question. We already have started paying on some of that. So we get our cybersecurity, cybersecurity insurance through along right now. And um we have a policy that got that probably in May. So this year's payment for July has already pretty good, has already been out there. So again, if that's something that you guys would like to look at, then we do the RP. It just would be neat.
Thank you. We get a comparable coverage that we should always try to do things within our community. So I agree, and we should definitely look at that action.
For our friends on
Thank you.
Creating a RFP.
All right, any other old business at this point? So with that, um when we enter executive session, we have to read this.
Like one thing I apologize was something just to kind of update the board on is the boiler. So I know we approved an up to a amount of three point five, going back to Kyle, campus and architects, the boiler that actually didn't work. So they have to have a paralline coming in. That's um the design for the boiler is about twenty grand. So the contingency was right now, we have quotes right around two seventy-one, the other one was like two seventy-nine. Contingency up to a amount of three twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars for the or twenty thousand dollars for the design plus five thousand for lawyers. Again, that's that's a high number. We're getting, we're creeping towards that three twenty-five, and I just don't want to even remember. And there's contingency in there as well. If it's hot, it's going to probably take about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to abate it and remove it. So we had talked about potentially going to um an all in amount of an up to of four hundred thousand dollars. We shouldn't have overspent that. I'd just much rather go high than have to come back and ask for money. So that's kind of the all in with the weather where it's at. We think we can do it at three twenty-five. I just hesitate on if it does come back positive for asbestos than with that fifteen point grand main price.
Okay.
So just wanted to.
Can we can we revisit that at the August fifth meeting?
Yeah.
If time then.
We have two quotes now. We're waiting on a third meeting, so.
Will we update the resolution from not to exceed three twenty-five to not to exceed?
Four hundred. But I don't think that's um timing is an issue right now, the schedule, when they would do it, it's probably October, November. That's when we're getting the best press because it's not very soon. We're in immediate need of heat tomorrow. Um so while it's still deemed an emergency, um they they think they can knock it out um probably within three or four weeks and probably start just.
Okay.
And just for clarification, then he said it, asbestos, but hot is not the temperature of the boiler, or is it has asbestos?
Nineteen eighty-seven, maybe. All right. Thank you. Thanks for that. So with that, they have to read. We're going to enter into executive session for all right, I can consent motion to go into executive session upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Enter into executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. We're here second. Thank you, everybody. We are in executive sessions.